All right, I'll call the Tuesday, May 17th, 2022 Meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'd ask Joe to call the roll, please.
Sure. Chairman Rich Roberts is here, Ryan Allard, let's see, Brian, Joe Hammer here, Jim Hughes, no, George Oecle, Tom Dean, Tony O'Mickie, nope, Dave Edwards, no, Michael Vera, nope, David Drake here, Peter Lambrouney, and Paul Thompson.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. So it's that four regular members and three alternates, so I will seat all the alternates. We have tonight two public hearings. Just as a reminder, the way the public hearings will work is that we will hear first from the applicant. They'll come up and make their presentation or provide the, you know, in the case of the continued hearing, provide the additional information that they want from the last hearing. The commission may have some questions for the applicant. There'll be some back and forth following that, open it up to members of the public who have either comments in favor, in opposition, or questions about the application. Once the members of the public have had a chance to ask their questions or make their statements, we'll have the applicant come back up and respond to them. There may be some more back and forth with the commission and staff at that point, and if, following that, the commission believes we have enough information to make a decision on the application, we will close the hearing and deliberate and possibly take action. If for whatever reason there are still significant open issues or things that need to be addressed that would be necessary for us to make a decision, we may continue the public hearing to our next meeting, but in any case, we'll make it clear to everybody what it is that's going on when it happens. And, you know, for members of the public and anyone else who wants to speak, we'd ask you to come up, speak into the microphone, provide your name and address for the record, and address any comments to the commission. You know, we've tended to be a little bit lenient and allowed, you know, back and forth and conversations in the past, but it makes the meetings last longer, and at a certain point, it's not either productive or useful. So we would ask you to address your comments to the commission, and once, you know, all the members of the public have spoken, we'll have the applicant or the staff, as necessary, come up and address any outstanding issues that remain at that point. So with that said, first item on the agenda is 3.1, the continued public hearing of 2104 22Z Hartford Brewing Company LLC, seeking a special permit in accordance with 52F2 and 9 for a change of use to a brew pub outside dining at 245 Main Street. And this is continued from about a month ago, and I believe, Denise can correct me if I'm wrong, that the outstanding issues that we had at that time were location of handicap parking, location of a couple of additional potential parking spaces. Some members of the commission asked the tree warden or someone to take a look at, I think it was the beech tree, out in front of the building, to kind of evaluate its future. And also, we had kind of not gotten to the discussion on a couple of things related to, like hours, for example. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant. Just please give us your name and address again.
Hello? My name, excuse me. My name is Micah Kerr. I live at 553 Maple Street. I am the owner of Boondoggle Beers, which is Hartford Brewing Company LLC. I'm not going to go through a lot of the background because I think we're probably all a little tired of that at this point, but I think I have to address the 14 items that were added to the conditions of approval last time. I think the committee would probably agree that most all of those have been satisfied because they were asking for updated drawings based on recommendations about the addition of adding a gate at one part on the patio. So going into all that, I think your drawings should reflect all that, and I think the comments made by staff reflected that those are no longer concerns. The primary concerns that we ended up, I guess, that led us to be back here in front of committee, that's not the right term, but is, is that the handicap parking, I am recommending that it be in front of the building because I don't want my folks that are my customers in wheelchairs to have to come in the back door. I'm getting a waiver from the State Building Department that requires you to add handicap spaces in any new parking that you construct. It's pretty standard. There's often hardship waivers when you do a renovation in a historic town. I'm not asking to not have to do it. I'm just asking that it be in front of the building so that the folks who have physical disabilities are able to enter through the front door like everybody else. I want my customers to feel welcome, and I don't want people to have to go in the back door. That is what kicked off some of the challenges. And when we were here back in November 3rd, when I received a 9-0 unanimous approval, it was my understanding at the time that that approval included my parking plan, as it was an attached document to the proposal, and in the parking plan, it clearly stated my request to repaint three public spaces on Main Street into two public handicap spaces on Main Street with an offloading crosshatch between them. This is the exact same configuration that the town put in front of Lucky Lou's, and it's essentially, all I'm asking for is something similar on Main Street north of Church Street, as there's currently no handicap parking spaces on the street north of Church. There are handicap spaces on private property, but none on Main Street, and I think anyone who visits our village that is, needs wheelchair accessibility, it makes their life a whole lot easier if they're able to use a public spot. That led to a lot of back and forth with a couple staff members, and I'm not certain, because I'm not sure I ever heard that what I was asking for was unsafe. I don't believe it ever was expressed that it was unsafe or inappropriate. What was expressed was that they wanted me to build additional parking. So not just the two spaces that I'm asking for, they were seeking me to build up to nine spaces on the state road, Main Street. While that's a perfectly good recommendation to make, every staff member gets to make recommendations before proposal comes here, and ultimately, under, I think it is 6.2 something under parking, the folks in this room get to decide whether they believe I've added enough parking. They did so by voting 9-0, is my belief. I don't know if anything's changed since then, but the staff would not allow me to file my approval, and would not allow me to seek my liquor license, and would not allow me to seek building permits. And because we reached an impasse over the trees, the location of handicap parking, and I believe a after-approval urge to add even more parking, we're back here. So all I'm really seeking from the town is approval of what I submitted in the past. I believe I added updated hours, which would allow my chef to offer breakfast or brunch if a business need is deemed. I personally feel there is, but I'm going to leave that to my chef because that's their purveyance. Monday mornings, there is currently not much for breakfast. You know, it's, there could be more. There always could be more, right? On top of that, I specifically resolved something that we didn't have time to get a ruling on before my initial November approval, which was the stairs coming out of the kitchen area in the basement of the building, which exits the building to the west, and we needed specific approval. As you can see, that's on the site plan. I've already, well, I haven't got formal approval from Historic District yet, but I got to bring it back. We're ready. So hopefully, everything there is good to go. As far as the other 14 items, they're very standard. Every single thing in there is basically asking me to build it according to code, which of course I will do. I will not get a certificate of occupancy unless I build the building to code. That is the law. That's International Building Code 2021, I believe, is the year they're on right now. So that should be of no concern. Certainly, it isn't a concern of zoning because the building department will ensure everything is to code. That includes lighting, that includes the need for the handicap parking, et cetera. So in short, I don't see much beyond that handicap space, and to me, the fundamental argument comes down to the staff wants me to add more parking, purely in numerical sense, and this commission saw fit to grant me approval of the 48 spaces I've already offered out of the 47 I'm required. So that's, I'm not asking for any additional spaces from the town. The handicap spaces that I'm offering to rebuild and paint for them, they will not be exclusive to me, Boondoggle, or anyone. They are Main Street, town, public, handicap parking. I don't, I'd like to think that that's something we should have more of. I've also, to help out, you may have seen in an email response I sent this morning, I waited till after I had a chance to speak to the town manager this morning. I list, I think it's four or five ways that I recommended that we can add parking at little cost. These are already approved changes recommended by Economic Development Studies that we as a town have paid for, parking studies that we have a town has paid for, and we've approved these studies. I just ask that we review those items, and maybe it is high time that we look at parking holistically in the village because, as they say, it takes a village, like we share. I hope my customers go and eat dinner at, I see Bryce is here, sorry, but I hope they go have a beer with me and then go eat dinner with him. I hope they get ice cream on the way home. I think that's why a lot of us bought in this town. I think that's why a lot of us invest in this town. For me, it's why I've been here for 12 years. There's nothing nicer than a walk in Old Weathersfield than to grab a drink or a meal. So I think we can do it as a community, and I think if you give me the opportunity, I don't think you'll regret it. I will fix that building up nicer than you ever imagined, certainly nicer than it's been the last 25 years while it's been vacant. It behooves me to do so. And I think that's really all I have. If there's anything specific you'd like me to address, if there's any questions, I'm happy to do so, but I think we've talked about it enough. Personally, I don't believe it should be about even having to save the trees. There should be no new construction in front of the building. If I have to build new spaces that avoid the tree roots, I'm also eliminating a bus. That bus delivers workers to Village Pizza. That bus eliminates the need for parking. So to add parking and eliminate a bus stop is incredibly contrarian in a world where we understand multimodal transportation. So I looked at this site with Peter Gillespie, who was the head of Economic Development at the time, and I specifically asked for a property that had bus access. It really matters to be able to get people places, not only customers, but employees. It makes it so much easier for me to find the staff I need if they can bus to work, bus home. My customers can take a bus in, and that bus is fantastic. It goes from downtown Hartford to Town Line Road, stops at the Borden, stops at the DMV, stops in Old Weathersfield. Why do I not, I want that to stop in front of my restaurant. You know, I hope that's it. There's a thing in there about music. I don't think that needs to be addressed. I said I'm happy to not have outside music. No problem. I think that was agreed upon. There's a thing in there about fixing up the exterior paint on the building. I'm going to ask that you remove that because I don't want that to keep me from opening. I've already had a seven-month delay over the perceived need for additional parking. I am going to fix that. You can count your bottom dollar, but I need to get this business up and open because it's, I'm not a multimillionaire coming in from New York to do this. I'm a 12-year resident. I live on Maple Street. The bar top going into the building was cut down at 210 Maple Street, just up the road from my house. This is as local as a business as you can get. So I just hope that you let reason prevail today, and that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, as we continue to discuss this, I was just going to pull down the screen.
Well, I can show you anything you want. If you have questions, I'm, well, happy to cover any of it.
I guess one thing that I do want to, I mean, you've mentioned the 14 conditions from the November application, and you haven't specifically applied to waive any of those. You've just come in with a different site plan, but that leads me to ask, did you look at page five of the staff memo dated the 11th that has-
Of which month?
Three bullet points on Main Street frontage and one bullet point on Church Street frontage, because that's from staff, and it starts with, therefore, to further this application to approval, the staff offers and recommends the following, and-
This was which month?
May 11th, 2022 A.D.
Is that the one I replied to this morning?
Yes.
Yep. You see my response of that email?
Unfortunately, I have this thing called a job.
Yeah.
No, I know, but-
I'm asking. I'm just, it was a question. It wasn't, I'm asking if you saw the response, that's why, so-
No, I saw two very long responses, but I haven't had time to read them.
Let me just pull that up, if you don't mind. Is that Lynn sent that, correct?
Yeah, like quarter or two this afternoon.
Right. Item, which item again, just now that I'm in it?
Well, the memo dated May 11th has, on page five, it seems to kind of lead to kind of a crescendo of, here are some recommendations to get this to an approval, and I didn't know what your response to those were.
Item by item, I think I covered a couple, but I'll just, I'll rip through them quick again in the interest of time. The proposed exterior improvements, outdoor seating and a garage, still need to be approved by the Historic District Commission, absolutely factually true.
No, no. I'm talking about page five.
I'm, I think I'm on page five.
No, that's page four.
Oh, my apologies. Yep. Sorry. Starting with Main Street frontage?
Yes.
So repurpose the southernmost existing angled parking spaces, and I believe, so that's the diagram that Derek sent out, is what we're talking about. Yep. So my simplest answer to that, I think I just addressed. While I can say that some of that makes sense, in fact, the parking, the increased parking on Church Street was something I recommended in a meeting with Bonnie and Derek about seven months ago. At the time, they were unwilling to give me feedback until I sent it to them on an A2 survey, at which point, it took me six months to get that survey, and when I asked to show the results, I was told I couldn't have the meeting, and I had to come back here, and that's why we're here. So those specific drawings from Derek, they are new. I would say that one on Church Street, they're not, I don't have any necessary major issues with that drawing. My question is, why after, when I proposed this in November, I actually never asked for additional parking. I used a previously deeded parking variance for nine spaces. I proposed six spaces, and I received an agreement with Hart Seed for 33 spaces at the time, and obviously, a lot has changed, but the head of zoning and staff accepted those parking allocations that I acquired as being adequate. If they were not adequate, I wouldn't have been able to come forward. You guys, sorry, you, as a commission, you voted to approve that application, which I can only believe means that you think that there was enough parking in that application. So every single time somebody puts something forth, town staff make recommendations. Not every recommendation is agreed to by the folks on this commission, and that's what makes this an effective government. Ultimately, the people who get to make the decision are you, zoning, and not the staff. So when the staff makes a recommendation, they're making it based on their education, past experience, other parts of town.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that we just deal with the issue at hand and not the history of how we got here? And I guess my question, I think the applicant just said he would do the three spaces on Church Street, if I heard him correctly several minutes ago? So is that something that-
Point of information, Mr. Hammer, I'm answering a direct question, and it's pretty straightforward. The only reason that there is anybody asking for additional parking today is because they want to. The recommendation was made back in October and voted on in November. There is a 6.2.6, I believe, in the parking regulations, allow folks on this commission to limit the number of total parkings because it's a village, because it's on a bus stop, because I have a parking plan, because I'm incentivizing my employees to use bicycles. I'm doing everything I can to limit and mitigate the need for parking. In fact, I also am not opening the second floor of the building. And so after approval, for the same folks who recommended additional parking to come back and again ask for more parking, that, to me, seems unfounded. So the history maps.
Yeah, I mean, we can have them provide that information if necessary, and I don't know whether that's a function of, now that you've added the garage, it takes away three spaces or not. Peter?
What I was going to say is exactly that. This is a changed plan. The garage shows three cars in there, but, you know, we understand that this is going to be a storage area, so those three cars are unlikely to be parked there. The co-configuration is different than it was before, which allowed for six spaces and in and out. That was completely different than this. So the three spaces on the side, I think mitigate that problem. And as a matter of fact, you brought it up last meeting.
Yep.
And you suggested, hey, I'm happy to put three spaces on the side.
Absolutely.
So the town staff has only done what was discussed here last meeting. So I want to make that clear.
I agree with that.
Another point I would like to make clear, because this has come back a couple times now, the last meeting, we approved the parking with a two-year condition that you work out the handicap situation with town staff. It was not a unilateral, you got your restriping and you're done. It's like, you have an idea, we want you to work with town staff, and we'll give you two years to work something out. Now, in that discussion, town staff had a different idea. So for you to say that you had a right to a restripped frontage is incorrect.
I never said I had a right to a restribe frontage.
Well, you said we approved the parking estimate. We approved a condition where potentially you could restrike if you work something out with town staff, and you have two years to do that.
Yes, in the context of-
Now, you still have a year left, as far as I know. If you want to look at-
I agree. I've endeavored to resolve that.
I'm just going to make that clear, this record clear, that we did not approve something verbatim as stipulated at the last meeting. So conditions have changed here. I think the town staff has done a great job. They checked with the tree. I had concerns about the tree, obviously. I mean, I wouldn't want to see that tree touched or hurt, but my understanding from the studies that were done, it's unlikely that it's going to affect that tree. If anything, it's a disease that will affect that tree. That's what our tree warden has said. And the condition that he's drawn here, which is not shown up there, is a good compromise.
Is that what's on the laptop here?
Can we put that up? So I think we ought to focus on, these are good compromise positions that the town has put forward, and let's stop arguing about what happened in the past, and let's focus on, can we make this work?
I'm not looking to argue about what happened in the past. I'm looking to, when I'm asked a question, I'm looking to just answer it.
Okay, so-
When it comes down to that parking on Church Street, there's a reason I recommended it, is if that's, if the issue is about where the handicap parking is, then there's an issue about where the handicap parking issue, where the handicap parking is. What the town engineer sent back to me was not just the Church Street parking. As you can see, he's asking for parking on Main Street and parking on Church Street, and that is above and beyond the scope.
He's providing a handicap solution which works best in the front, as you have-
Best?
It works best in the front, as you have suggested many times, and he's in agreement with you, and he's providing a solution in the front with minimum-
What's wrong with just painting the existing spaces? I asked that question. I've never received a single answer in the time I've been doing this. What is wrong? Why add cost? Let a business get open. This is, we've heard, I don't understand why I have to build spaces and encroach on the edge of a tree there and build additional spaces on Church Street. I have had to make, I've had to make all sorts of concessions to try to make this business work, and while maybe it is too much, I don't know, but I don't believe it is.
Every site plan requires the handle, handicap parking-
Absolutely.
On his own property. We're giving you a lot of latitude here, and the town is actually-
Respectfully, respectfully, a back and forth conversation between you and I won't help anything, right? So that's, to answer your question, truly, there is not just the three spaces on Church Street being discussed here, if we're being fair. That is not what's being happened. If it were to add those spaces on Church Street, I have a drawing from my engineer that I'm happy to substitute in. I believe I sent it, Denise, out. I'm not, I think you have it, and I sent that out weeks ago. As far as the six spaces in, behind the building, at the time it was initially proposed, the commission, excuse me, staff was asking me to make that public parking, and it's much more efficient to make it staff parking. Staff come once, they leave once. Staff can sort of block each other in. Staff have a lot more leeway than customers. So therefore, by adding that garage there, yes, maybe I am removing spaces, but the Lincoln Town Cars that we drew on there certainly won't take up three spaces. There's a very good chance that we'll have four, or five, or six spaces back there. If you want me to add spaces on Church Street, I vocalized before, I'm happy to do that. What I continue to not understand and not be okay with is why I am building new parking in front of the building on a state road when there's a very elegant solution, which is simply allow me to repaint it. In the email that you should have received today, I gave five different ways with which the town can improve parking on Main Street that I not come up with, that people, that we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to in studies over the years came up with. They were recommended studies, and they were approved by past members of town. I just hope that we look at those things, because the total number of parking spaces isn't really the issue here. If the issue is one or two spaces to make this economic development project go forward, I dare say, and I can't say I know for a fact, but I dare say that the increased tax revenue of this property alone could pay for the maintenance at the Church Street parking lot across the street, and we could make that a public parking if they would allow it, and we could put signing and make it so much easier for everyone in the village. There are so many solutions that we can come up to, but cutting in more parking on Main Street in a beautiful, leafy community is not the goal in Historic Weathersfield.
Just so I understand clearly, what I'm hearing from you is that you do not want to put these recommendations in. You don't want to add the parking as suggested by town staff, and you would simply like to stripe the front and call it quits?
If this were, if this was a brand-new proposal, brand-new, I would recommend painting the three stripes out front, and I would, in my parking application, say, I would count up my parking spaces as per normal, and I provided 48 spaces. If that is in doubt, then obviously, that's a conversation we need to have. But I provided 48 spaces as per planning. I required 47 spaces as per code. I've satisfied the need for parking. I don't make those rules. I can't be better prepared than that, other than I followed the rules set forth by the town building code, the town parking code. I worked with town to do so. I'm not creating a maverick response here. I'm just, I don't, I don't, that's why adding more and more and digging up more grass to make more parking, to me, does not seem like the old Weathersfield I know and love, okay? I don't know how to put that other way. So if that is a yes, that's a yes. I don't know how to put it in other terms.
My understanding is you would like to simply stripe the front.
I would love to.
And that's what you're requesting.
I don't see any reason to disturb the tree.
That's fine. I think we should deal with that.
Yep. I don't want to disturb the tree, and I don't want to disturb the bus stop, because I intend to take advantage of the fact that that eliminates vehicles from the street.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and I'll let Denise-
My understanding is you would like to simply stripe the front.
I would love to.
And that's what you're requesting?
I don't see any reason to disturb the tree.
That's fine. I think we should see that.
Yep. I don't want to disturb the tree, and I don't want to disturb the bus stop, because I intend to take advantage of the fact that that eliminates vehicles from the street.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and I'll let Denise speak in a second, but I think, you know, one of the points that may not be clear to everyone is that we are not the town traffic authority, which is why our condition was what it was in November. Because, you know, we could come up with all kinds of things that we say should be done on town streets, and it's up to other people to actually authorize and effectuate that. So, you know, if we were to say, yeah, you're right, we're basically back to where we were in November, and that doesn't really move the ball along. We're not trying to be obstinate. It's just that, you know, we don't have control over what happens on those parking spaces. And I think the three on Church Street is directly related to having the garage there. I don't know. Do you want to?
Maybe Derek can come up and describe the sketch that you put together.
Well, I guess first, just back to page five. Were there any other items on here? I guess, no, I guess this is what we were talking about, the Main Street frontage. Yeah.
Yep. And that's, and that's, the proposal that I sent to you folks was the restriping. That's all it showed. I mean, that's why in my parking, if you look at my parking study, it shows the restriping. If the town's recommendation is to add those three spaces on Church Street, then I'm all for it, but I don't wish to agree to redoing the front of Main Street in any way. I don't feel as though it's necessary. I think there will be future road improvements in town that I hope will potentially change the angle of the stripes that will add spaces. I hope that there's an opportunity to make the spaces narrower than nine feet, as that's a generously wide parking space. There's an opportunity to have a parking agreement with First Church. There is an ability to do a lot of things in this village to improve parking, so. George, you look like you have a question.
You really ought to let the town staff present this. I would prefer to hear that.
Oh, I'm all for it. Yes, they want to present it. I just wanted to be clear.
I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear exactly what his position was before we started getting into anybody's back-and-forth and also...
I have no problem with Church Street as drawn by Derek, excuse me, the town engineer. In fact, maybe we would, there were some changes I might ask for if we could maybe add a little loading crosshatch or something, but I don't dare leave here without a concrete solution. So.
Could I just ask another clarif, just aside from this parking, I just want to make sure I understand. In your hours of operation, I think you said you want to start at six, right?
It doesn't have to be six. I just mean for breakfast. So I use six as an appropriate time. I've subsequently looked, and I believe the earliest opening on Main Street, seven. I don't think it would be terribly wise to go before that. So whatever, I mean, you guys adjusted my evening hours as what you felt fit. I figured you'd do the same for breakfast. I'm all for whatever you guys want. So, yeah, it was just, we got to ask for something. So I didn't know where the target was to begin with.
All right. Does anybody else have anything before we ask Derek to kind of wait? I mean, because I...
Yeah, I'm good.
I think that's kind of the 800-pound gorilla you're...
Sure is.
Not meaning to...
Yeah, Derek and I, I think, spoke about it last meeting, and I said I would be open to it. So I'm fine with that. It's the other part I don't care for.
Okay.
So, all right. It's all yours, boss.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Derek Gregor, town engineer. Just a couple things, just quickly, just to set the record straight. With regard to the bus stop, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, we've been in communication with CT Transit outside of this project, and they have put forth a recommendation to relocate that bus stop for their operations. So regardless of what happens with this project and the parking, that bus stop, to my understanding, CT Transit will be relocating. So that's really a non-issue with respect to what we're talking about tonight.
Where is the bus stop now, just so that we all have?
Yeah, it's located, it's located in this vicinity, I think.
Okay.
Right here, a little closer to the intersection. So it's outside of where we're proposing parking anyway, but it is looking to be relocated. With regard to, you know, the applicant saying, we haven't discussed, we're giving him a reason why, I mean, I think we spoke to it quite extensively at the last meeting. The town's position with not just myself, but town staff, town manager's position has been that, you know, we don't feel we should have to give up public parking spaces to accommodate a need here when what's being provided is so much less than what really should be provided. So we're looking for him to do a little something to help the situation. Obviously, you know, the parking that this facility will generate is far exceed what's available, but we're looking for some cooperation in offering something to help us out a little bit here, rather than us having to go backwards, at least just put in what you need to do as part of that disapplication. So with this plan, and again, you know, I'm sure nobody wants to hear it again, I don't really want to get into a whole back-and-forth. That's why we met as staff, we talked about all the discussions that we've had with the applicant over the many months since the last time he was here, and what we felt would be a reasonable recommendation to the commission as to what staff feels should be done. You know, obviously, as was stated, it's a recommendation, you can do whatever you like with it, but we agreed as a group that this, we felt, was a reasonable compromise. So with respect to the changes to this plan, the big change is in the back, as was mentioned. There's going to be new garage back here. Originally, on the last approval, that was approved with conditions, I just want to point out, one of those conditions was related to the handicap parking. So it wasn't as if it was just a proof car blanche, there was a lot of conditions that needed to be met. But with that particular plan, there were six public parking spaces in the back available to the public. With this change in plan, the three in the garage are non-conforming spaces that don't meet the regulation because they're stacked parking. Excuse me. Police Department, I hope that's not important, but we'll see if they call back. I may have to take that. So, so the three in the garage, we can't count, so we've lost three. The three there outside the garage technically don't meet the regulation because of the fact that they're supposed to be able to negotiate and turn around without backing into the street. I understand the applicant's position about their staff parking, it's not public now. But one thing with this change is now we have six spaces on site that are no longer available for use because they're going to be for staff. So what we looked at and said, all right, you know, originally, we had six back there. Looking at his calculations, we felt he needed to provide seven in the vicinity of the site. So we were, you know, allowing the three that are outside the garage to count, so looking for four more, and that's how we came up with this plan. I know the applicant at one point had suggested some parallel parking along Church Street over here, which we felt, you know, would be reasonable to provide some parking there. The right of way is quite a ways back. So originally, there were some recommendations to put angled parking in there. However, without getting into that much reconstruction, I think just moving the curb line back to the sidewalk would be reasonable to put three spaces in here. So that gives us three back, so now we end up with six. And to get that last one, what we were showing up here, which is pretty consistent, what we've been talking about, is taking that southernmost space that exists, making that a handicap space. To replace that space, there'd be another handicap space outside, beyond a cross-hatched area, and then one new parking space. So there's a trade-off, minus one, plus one, and then one more spot. So if you add up the three in the back, the three on Church Street, the one new spot on Main, it's seven spaces that, and that's how we came up with this recommendation.
Could you just explain, of the two new spaces, where is there currently grass that'll be converted to pavement in that area?
So what you see highlighted in gray is what is behind the curb right now. So right now, the curb line runs up here and down. So this would be new paved area. This is the new connection. He has to make a pedestrian connection. He was showing it up here on the plan that was submitted, so we're saying, you know, with this, we'd want it in the hatched area to come in through here, you know, outside of the, what's considered the critical root zone of the tree. You know, one thing for the record, too, I know there were some correspondence submitted and discussions about us talking about taking out both those trees. I just want to make it clear, that was never the intention or discussion the staff had. The southern tree is a sycamore, it's a 42-inch, it's very healthy. There's been no discussion of impacting that at all. As noted in the memo, we did talk to the tree warden after the last meeting that we had to get more information on how he felt about this 46-inch beech tree. In short, he said, there's a beech disease going around, a lot of the trees are getting sick. He said that is a diseased tree that he's been watching for a while anyway. In his opinion, he felt like regardless of this project, in the next two to four years, it's likely going to have to come down as a public safety issue. However, his preference, when I came last time to talk, was, you know, if there's going to be any work up there, he'd like to take the tree down now and get it out of the way, replant, but take that tree down. I've talked to him since. I said, well, I said, you know, in the hopes of trying to keep the tree, one thing we did do, you can see the jog in the curb line here. So this is the existing curb line, which is set back quite a ways off the gutter of the road, more than it needs to be. So we're jogging this curb line in about five feet closer to the road so we can really minimize the parking that we need, keep it further away from the roots. He reviewed this plan and said he doesn't feel that work would have any impact on the life of the tree, which is very limited to begin with. He said he'd be willing to leave the tree and continue to monitor it, and if and when at some point it does need to come down, he could take it down at any point. So he was willing to, you know, go that route rather than removing it ahead of time.
You didn't think you had to go get another tree consultant other than our town tree warden?
I mean, town doesn't have...
You didn't see the need for it, huh?
Well, I mean, we have professional staff for that reason. He's on staff, he reviewed the plans, he offered his opinion. You know, certainly the applicant would be welcome to, you know, bring in another, you know, expertise if he felt that wasn't reasonable. But we have done what we can to move it away, limit the impacts, and like I said, he, you know, he said he'd be willing to leave it there and just, you know, see what happens. But he didn't feel that would have a negative impact on the tree as it is right now. So I just want to make that clear, because I see there's some public conversation about we're trying to get rid of trees for a couple parking spaces, and that's not what's occurring here.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Derek?
I have just one. I don't know if this is for Denise or for Derek, but I'm just curious, does the HDC have any oversight in terms of creating on-street parking spaces, or is that outside of their scope?
That's a good question, because we do have some projects in other areas of Old Weathersfield that we're having, the town attorney is reviewing that right now to see. Generally, the way we've read the regulation is if it's on-site, like, for instance, the parking in the back of this property, it's on a property, they do. It's a little questionable in the right-of-way. I haven't specifically had any conversations with them about this, so to answer that, I'm not sure legally if they do or do not, but that is currently under review by the town attorney.
Thank you. Peter?
I have a question, Derek. I'm just curious, why two handicap parking spaces? You added, you're going to stripe one, it's existing, right? And then you're adding, why are we adding another one? Why can't it just be striped one and just an additional parking to get the seven that you referred to?
I mean, the seven, so if we, if we just striped, let's say, let's say we just, the northern one, we restripe as handicap, we put in the crosshatch area. That would be utilizing one of the existing town spaces as a handicap spot. So we'd be looking to replace that.
Okay.
And then we have six others elsewhere in the back and on Church Street, so we'd be adding one. So, you know, I think if we were going to put them in, our original recommendation, going back to last fall, was two handicap parking spaces out here. You know, there's some flexibility.
I have no problem with two.
Yeah.
So that's...
So I'm just curious, sorry. Thank you.
It's more efficient use of square footage also with the crosshatch being shared versus each individual handicap having its own crosshatch spot for the wheelchairs. It becomes more efficient using one shared crosshatch for two handicap spaces.
Okay.
Sorry to interject.
Roughly how many square feet of green area we're removing here, do you know?
I'm going to do some calc in my head. Probably, I'm going to guess somewhere around 500, 600 square feet, if you want to look at it in square footage. Just looking at the two locations, Main Street and also down along Church Street.
Okay, yeah. Got you.
And the Main Street, the portion of the new proposed pavement on your drawing is how far from the intersection of Church, if you look at the closest edge of Main Street new pavement, roughly?
Okay. I'm going to estimate it's probably about 80 to 100 feet back from the intersection. Certainly, certainly far enough back that it wouldn't be unreasonable to put it there, you know, potentially, and we don't have a plan right now, but if the town can acquire funding, you know, we may look at putting in more parking, but we would, we would just expand off of what's there. We wouldn't be taking it out or doing anything different with it. So we may even look to put more in at some point if it's not done as part of this application, but again, that's just something that the town will be looking at, as was mentioned, looking at parking in this whole area and where we can help make improvements that's going to benefit the public and the owners down here as well.
To use some of the remaining 80 feet, in other words, yes?
Yeah, we wouldn't want to, you know, go right up to the intersection if we can avoid it, so we probably wouldn't do that, but, I mean, there's, I think I noted in a couple of the memos I had written, there's certainly space to probably put seven or eight here. We're just looking for really two with the crosshatch area.
Can I also ask you, the existing angled spaces in that area on Main Street and going farther towards the ice cream shop, are those, are those just the minimum width under the, under our regulations, or are those bigger than minimum?
No, nine foot is very typical. Typical parking space here are nine by 18. So these being angled, they have a little bit of a different length to them, but they are still nine feet wide. You know, to Mr. Kerr's point, you know, there are, there are 60-degree spaces, that's what we have throughout the area, that's pretty typical. I know some municipalities are starting to look at with some repaving of maybe going to a 45-degree angle, which can offer more. What we have to look at is turning movements to get in and out of those spaces, because it's going to be a little harder, because it's going to be angled a little bit more in backing movements with respect to traffic. So, I mean, that is something we may look at long-term, but to go and, you know, as was suggested, maybe go and restripe everything now is more of a project that we're going to take on. This road's due for some mill and overlay, some new pavement within the existing curb lines, and when we do that, that's something we'll consider.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and that's also harder there, because I think you only have, like, three spaces between every driveway, so you're not going to be able to pick much up.
Yeah, in different locations, there are limitations in that respect, yes.
George, maybe you remember, but I seem to recall that years ago, maybe 25 or more, that green area was parking area. That whole, that whole area got reconfigured and the green area was added back 20, 25 years ago.
Right.
So at one point, parking went all the way close to that, to that curve point. I don't know if you remember that, Joe, this was many, many years ago. And then they reconfigured that whole intersection and they added green space. So we're just taking out a little bit of what was originally there anyways.
Yeah, I think, I think we widened Main Street and Church Street to traffic calm.
That's a good point. Yeah, I didn't think of that. That whole issue was discussed as part of this application, because originally, the plan was taken from an old plan, which didn't show the curb lines right, which was making it hard to figure out where the parking needed to be. This plan has been updated, as he stated, he got a survey done, and it shows it correctly, and that would have been a good thing to show on this plan, but the old curb line was in further. So to your point, yes, they did add more in recent, maybe six, seven years ago when they did the project.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Unless you have other questions, I'm satisfied.
Okay, thanks. So I guess, you know, the point we're at is, you know, that this is what town staff recommends, it's not what the applicant has applied for. Is your objection paying for it?
Well, I think it does create additional overhead to open a business, and I'm already rehabbing a building that's been vacant for 25 years. I'm aware that's my choice. I'm not going to ask the town for money for this. What I'm going to ask for, and this is, we can make this an official ask if you like, I will put in the parking on Church Street. I'm happy to do so. Well, you can see that there's three spaces, we'll do three spaces, we'll make that the minimum set, there might be a loading thing, we can work that out in the drawings probably, right? I am going to ask for you to allow me to go with me on this one, allow me to repaint the three spaces that are currently the closest to the building, as I've previously proposed, and give me two years. Allow me to open, allow me to have revenue, allow me to pay for this. And if, after those two years, I can't get... And if after those two years, I can't get, I'll, I'll build what Derek drew, or I'll come back with a better plan.
Okay.
Your call. I think you, you gave me two years in the past to resolve things with the town, you give me two years, I might build that, but in the interim, please let me paint it blue so I can open. I think that's pretty fair.
Could you repeat again what happens after two years?
I'll, I'll put it in the way this is, or you shut me down.
Oh, okay.
I just need to have some income. I, I just don't want to, I've been, I've had to pick up a lot of unnecessary costs, in my opinion, because I, I, my initial request, if you recall, when I came to you guys in October, was I said, this building is in desperate need of saving, and I hope to do it, but I need you to let me do it in a piecemeal fashion. I need a minimally viable product, you might recall me saying that about ten times the first time I came here. If you give me a minimal viable product, I will continue to improve the property because it behooves me to do so.
Okay. The point, the point I was trying to make earlier is that, well, two things, one, that's essentially what we agreed to in November that didn't work, because the building officials said you needed the handicap spaces now, and secondarily, as I mentioned again earlier tonight, we don't have control over approving, restriping town spaces. So, you know, if town staff is not amenable to that, we can approve it until it gets light again, and it, and it won't change anything.
Right. If, if I am, if it is approved with temporary handicap parking on top of the existing three spaces, then it will allow, then that, that mitigates the issue that the building department had in order to give me a C, a CO. I will then have legal parking, and therefore I'll be able to have a CO. And, um, I guess if Derek agrees that that is something that he's okay with, like I said, I'm happy to build those other, I'm, I'm not happy to, but I will be, do, I'll do it, uh, because if that's my only path, but the cost, I, I'm not a fan, hopefully we'll come up with a better solution over time, but we'll have two years to do that.
Okay.
Who's paying for all of this?
Me.
Town or him?
Well, nobody right yet. I mean, and I, I guess, you know, the question I have before we move off this subject is, you know, whether, whether and how we can provide a temporary approval of the handicap spaces as you've requested in a way that is satisfactory to the building official and the, the official traffic authority of the town, so that we don't grant something that, that's impossible-
Yep.
-or doesn't achieve everyone's objective here.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Derek, do you know the answer to either of those questions?
The only thing I was going to mention, it was my understanding from November that the, that the extension was granted because there was some misinformation about our town project that was going to affect these, and therefore the applicant didn't want to put something in that we were going to come tear out.
Right.
Um, I think we've, at the hope, I've adequately explained that that is not the case, we, we don't have any plan that was going to affect it. So if that was the reason for the extension at the time, then I would recommend that, you know, that's no longer on the table, so there really shouldn't be a need for the two-year extension if that was the reason.
I think what we'd like to know is, if we approve a two-year temporary solution, which involves just restriping in the front, would that be okay with you? And at the end of two years, after he operates, then he's obligated to put in what you suggest here?
All's, all's I could go back to is in, as I said, discussion with staff and the local traffic authority. The answer has been consistently since November that we do not want him restriping existing spaces, whether it be, I mean, in five years, his, his agreement for parking goes away, and that's another discussion you guys got to have, is what happens then, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, my, my opinion based on staff's discussions is, no, that wouldn't be our recommendation.
That's true.
Um, you know, one thing to consider, I, I want to just point out with regard to handicap parking, um, I did speak to the building official today to understand, uh, what he was explaining, just so you're aware of it, is if, if, if this went forward with the three parking spaces on-site, one of those will have to be, one, three parking spaces outside the garage, and one of those will have to be handicap accessible, regardless.
You get, you, the state building inspector, you can check, see, because he told me to speak to him first, you can get a waiver on, when you build new parking at the rear, it is, it is generally accepted practice to put the handicap back there. You can get a waiver to do so, it's not uncommon in historic districts, especially ones such as Weathersfield. My issue is that if I put a handicap space at the back, I guess I have no issue with that, but only if my primary entrance is already the handicap entrance. My issue is I do not want folks in wheelchairs to be coming in the back doors, second-class citizens, it's not the intent of the ADA.
Yeah, I don't disagree. All's I'm doing is conveying what the chief building official told me, so maybe, maybe there's a waiver process, we didn't discuss that, I'm just relaying what he told me this afternoon. But, I mean, you could work that out with him, so if, if that's not required, I don't have an issue with it, because for the same reason, that's not the access point that we're looking for, he's looking for.
It's just a waiver, it's pretty standard from what I understand, and, um, absolutely, I think it's even noted in my parking study that our intent is to apply for said waiver. So, and if you look at the four or five-page document that I submitted specifically regarding parking, that, that information is in there. Um, and it references the state building, uh, codes and state building inspector as such.
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
You, I, in the plan, you're going to do the garage, right?
You can remove the garage for right now if it gets me approval, I don't really care, but it's a five-year plan, so I put it on there, that's a deeded approval-
Well, what's that mean, a five-year plan? You can do it five years-
All, all site plans by law in the United States of America are a five-year document, so since I need to get a, a site plan approval, right, it's a five-year plan.
So when-
Right, that's my understanding, you know?
If we approve tonight, we're not approving the garage-
Oh, God, no, no, no.
Being built.
No, no, no. So first off, I would need, yeah, no, 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 no way, yeah. It's just, it's just for the site plan purposes, right. You'd, that'll, a whole nother visit, that I have to get approval from the Historic District Commission, who need to approve the architectural details of such an addition, which is-
Don't you think you need that garage for more than even a garage? I mean, for your-
Not, not to, not to get the business started, no. I'll have to do more work, and it will be a bit of a pain, and it might create some noise for my neighbors that I don't want them to have, but I do want to put that garage in, absolutely.
Okay.
And my hope is within the first five years of operation.
You'll do it five years from now?
I would hope to do it in a couple of years, but it all depends, I keep having to pay for new things, so I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, Joe?
So-
This is an exercise in scope creep, so.
On, on the bigger issue, you know, I, I agree with what the town engineer and I think others may have also said, which is, you know, the applicant is being given a lot of forgiveness from our normal parking requirements, and I think the practical issue is if he restripes those spaces, you're taking three non-handicap spaces out of circulation in an area where parking is already scarce, so I think they should be replaced. You know, they're, they're serving a private applicant in his commercial endeavor on town property, so I think we're cooperating with him in that sense, but I think they should be replaced, you know, in terms of the timing. Um, I guess my only comment on there is I think every time we, every time we leave-
So, John, I'm assuming he should put in the Church Street spaces?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I was concerned, I was concerned originally from the last hearing, reading the, the minutes of the potential damage to the tree, et cetera, I feel better based on what we've heard tonight and, and from the, from the tree warden in terms of this not being an issue. But I guess the other thing I was going to say is, the more stuff we build in to do it later, do it later, do it later, I think it puts an element of risk in there for everybody, you know, the town most especially. And I guess I would just ask Derek, the town engineer, um, again, this, this should not be, I mean, I think this is the right thing to do, because the private applicant is benefiting from town property, but I'm just curious, sort of the, uh, to get some sense of how major an undertaking, um, creating that new paved area on Main Street would be, you know, just from a, again, cost should not be the issue, I don't think, for us, but I'm, I'm just curious, is it a, you know, is it a modest project, a huge project? How would you characterize it in terms of what would be involved for somebody to undertake?
Um, I, I mean, in general, given the overall scope of the project, I don't think it's very much. Um, if I had to throw a number out, I mean, putting some curb in, and just extending the existing pavement, uh, there's no drainage or anything else required in that respect, so I'm going to say, you know, we're talking ten, fifteen thousand dollars maybe, uh, if you want a number, I mean, off the top of my head. So, it's not extremely significant, um, you know, when, when you consider everything else that's being done. Um, so, that is the best answer I guess I can give you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Statistically, twenty thousand dollars per service parking space is the cost, forty thousand for structured, you can check out the Parking Institute of America for that information, that's where I got it. That's another number, I don't know the actual number, but just as a point information, that's a corollary from the Parking Institute of America, which Alan Lezuski, if he's the president of-
I think that's based on building freestanding parking lots with, you know, entrances and circulation and so on and so forth, I, I don't know that it's that involved to-
Yep.
-to bump in the street line on an existing street and put two parallel parking spaces. I'm, I'm not an expert on this, but I would just note that.
So, I just, one other comment regarding the Main Street parking, and I, I just leave this out there, and it's your guys' call, like, again, I, I've told you what I'm willing to do, I have no prob, I have no, literally no problem with Church Street, that was initially my proposal, so I have no problem doing it, I've said that in the past. Um, I, I ask the town to question the slippery slope they create by demanding a business owner build new parking along Main Street, the straight, the state road, at their own cost in order to open a business, a business out of an existing building. I'm not building a new building, I'm renovating an old building. So if you guys are going to do this for me, the first person in the history of Weathersfield is almost four hundred years, and you're going to have me put in parking on that street, it means precedent that any other future applicant can be told that they need to add parking. It means that any existing business on Main Street that wants to add a few patio spaces, or who wants to, um, expand their dining room, is now potentially exposed to adding new parking at their own cost. And so as a slippery slope there, is this town road public parking? And as part of the public, does this property not deserve nine parking spaces? Because that's all I got. Just, it's a, it's a point to think about. I am not the boss of that decision, I'll leave it to you guys, but it is, it is a reality, so.
No, I appreciate that, and as, you know, I've tried to say, we're not the boss of parking on town streets either, so.
Who is?
The local traffic authority, I think it's the town manager.
Okay. Well, that's, we've had some turnover there, so that's okay.
Yep.
All right. Uh, shame we, we'll have to, hmm, he's just one weekend, so. It's a little early to ask him to chime in on this one, I think, for him, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I mean, but-
A little late, a little late and a little early at the same time, yeah, so.
I don't know, has he already or not?
You guys met, I know, and he spoke to me briefly, but not, not about the details.
Yeah, we, I, I briefed the new town manager, local traffic authority on, on this application where we were, and, um, you know, at least verbally, he said he supported our position on not taking away existing, um, parking spaces to accommodate the need.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I guess at this point, um, we've kind of covered that subject, the need to digest it, but there are members of the public here, um, and I would like to open the floor to them to, to have some input, and there, there is some, some correspondence that we've received as well, uh, that won't take long to summarize since they're all identical.
And at some point, will we also be addressing the other staff comments that we have in our report as well?
Um-
Yeah, I guess, just off the top, just as one example, I'm, I'm trying to sort of piece together to remember how that outdoor dining setup differs from what we approved in November, um, and plus there was, there was also a staff comment in there regarding the, the makeup of that area, and then I guess we've got the hours of operation, proposed change was the other item I can think of.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I did, I did cover that at the last meeting for the patio, it's, we were asked to move it to be completely on my property. If recall, the last time, prior, I was trying to get, um, a lease or purchase agreement from the town for the right-of-way land, and, uh, it just, that wasn't going to happen in any short time, so I moved as recommended, everything on to quote-unquote "my property" within, uh, which I think the goal at the time was that makes the capacity or occupancy numbers less and what have you, so that was a pretty easy fix. And then we added the details of, um, I think there was a gate that was missing, and I added the details of the bicycle parking on the northeast corner of the property, and I think that was pretty much it. I added a few more plants to add privacy for, um, my neighbors to the west.
Is, is the layout of the, of the tables and stuff part of what you're going in front of the Historic District Commission on?
Uh, the layout of the ta, they, I, I mean, I think that they, they, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that their purveyance is more in the aesthetic, so they have more sway over that. So I've already had a, a meeting with them, it was a preliminary hearing on this, but my main, part of that is, I, I was trying to figure out how I wanted to plant the trees that I want in there, as I intend to build a topiary, but, um, yes, at that time, the, the table layout will need to be finalized, but the numericals, the numbers are, like, that's already on here, so the number of seats, if that's your concern, but, um-
I guess the number of seats and the types of furniture that you're going to be using, I assume they'll review all of it.
Yeah, they'll have to have approval of that, or, or I can't do it, so, is my understanding. They the boss.
Denise?
Yeah?
There's a, there's a lot of history here, and, uh, Joe, I had some difficulty going through this, trying to remember, what did we approve exactly and what has changed, so, uh, maybe a question to you, Denise, was there anything specific to this application that's different from previous? For example, there was a question in there, uh, what are you going to do, are you going to have patio blocks or stuff? I think that was answered maybe a meeting or two back, the answer is no, I think it was just going to be grass. Uh, but are there other concerns that have come up that we should be aware of? I mean, there's so much in here.
That's all identified on the site plan. Patio pavers are drawn on.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
Most, you know, a lot of, um, the comments that we have made will be addressed, um, with the Historic District Commission application in terms of, um, the actual, uh, specifics of the lighting, the seating.
Okay.
Um, but we could also make a comment to the commission as they are, um, reviewing that application as well. Um, so I think that that would probably, um, be per the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess-
I need to scroll.
Maybe I'm not right, but, you know, my-
So what do you want to show?
My impression was that even though this was presented to us as a special permit, it was really just a modification of the existing special permit-
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
-to deal with the parking, to add the garage, and a couple other kind of ancillary changes, not to, you know, relitigate every, oh, and the hours, not to, you know, get a second or third bite at everything that was part of the initial approval.
Yeah, I, I mean, the major change is the addition of the garage-
Right.
Um, and the, the reduction of the-
I guess maybe to clarify my question, if, if we just keep our deliberation on the parking, the hours of operation in the garage, would that be sufficient to, to you and to town staff-
Yes.
-that that's really what's important here?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would allow, again, to move, continue to record on, over, because the Historic District Court needs to go to win another, hopefully.
It would allow for staff to sign off on the building permit, so he can continue.
Okay. Peter, I tried to zoom in, but I failed, so I apologize.
When is the HTC?
It's sort of on the screen. It says the, the paver part is up.
I'm not sure that he's-
The hash marks are the pavers, and they're identified, and I, on like page seven of the site plan, it has the individual product with the substrate and all that identified.
That looks good.
So, yeah, that's because that section in front of the building is mossy, mud, mud all, like, most of the summer, and that I need to add some kind of strength to. The grass would maybe change eventually, but for now, we're going to try grass.
I just wanted to ask you, have you, are you already on an HTC agenda for your final review? Have you submitted to them yet?
This was, I considered this to be more of a necessary hurdle before that. I had my preliminary on the full thing, including the elevations of the garage. I have a finalized aesthetic. I've got it all ready to go. I just need to-
Do you have some sense of what, you know, when you're gonna hit them?
If I get approvals today and the conditions make sense, you know, I don't mean to say that, but you know, I mean, if we are in a good position to move, if we can move forward after today, then I will be talking to Kim tomorrow. I'll be filing my application, and I'm ready to go.
Okay. And you understand you need their approval before the town can issue a building permit?
Only for the exterior work, yes. For the interior work and for my liquor license and for my brewing license, I can, I can get that without Historic Commission, and those are the primary impediments for my opening, is I have to go through federal and state regulatory processes in order to get approval. So, so at the bare minimum, no matter what happens today, if there's anything that allows me to implicitly move forward with that, because I've already achieved a zone change and created a new zone and all that, I would love to be able to get those permits started because that's ultimately gonna be the thing that stops, slows me down, I should say.
Okay. Dave?
I was gonna say, I thought you said you didn't care about the garage. Why do you muddy into the upper of the garage? Why don't you come back two years now, worry about that? Get yourself going.
Because it's, because when people were talking to me about the six parking spaces in the back, it feels pretty, it feels disingenuous when I have to talk about the location of a dumpster on a asphalt parking pad that they want customers to park at, when I already know that my true plan is to put that garage in there. So, it would be sort of a, I think, a backwards way to go into this project saying, yeah, we're gonna put six parking spaces in the back. We're gonna do this, that, and the other thing and have a dumpster-
Then go take that, then take them away later, you're saying.
Right. So, and also, the reason you didn't have it before was, I was nowhere near having a design finalized with all the other stuff I had to do. And so, with this, it's a lot easier for you to see kind of truly how the site will be laid out. I actually, I would rather redraw the way the parking in front of the garage is, frankly, but I am not my own land use engineer, and therefore I just have to pay him and make comments. But it should provide adequate staff parking, is the point of that space. And it will allow me to put my delivery van in the garage at night and-
Yeah, but let me go back to the same senses, though. If you, well, I look at this plan with the garage, and you don't do it.
It doesn't matter. That garage is, already was approved from the property owner, Robert Tabshay. He, Roger? Jeez, Robert, sorry, Roger. Roger Tabshay got that approved. It's a, it's a deeded variance to have that garage. I'm using the same square footage, and that's very intentional. I don't wanna have to sort of debate the garage when it's already been debated. I see there being a need for me to use that deeded garage, and in order for it to not be lost in the process, which this all is, I want it to be on there now. So, in the future, when it's like, hey, remember that garage in three years? Well, here's your, here's your plan.
No, but I'm saying the reverse. What if in two, three years, you don't build the garage, and everybody's waiting for this garage, kind of cover up the dumpster and watch it, gee, she didn't build the garage?
Um.
I was kind of with you.
Sure.
I'll be on this handicap, the extra spacing. I was kind of with you on the two years, to make your business viable, give you a break and get going.
There-
Come back in two years, do the parking, do the garage, do a few things, and everybody be happy. It's a tough spot.
How about this? I'm trying to please everyone right now, so that's my best answer. I've gone through this, and I don't wanna decry the process, but it's been really frickin' brutal. And if it means not having a garage for a few years, I'm okay with it. If I have my druthers, within a year, concrete's, concrete's in, and I'm framing that bad boy up. And you're gonna see me out there doing the framing work, because I need to save money at this point, because I've had to spend a hundred and fifty dollars on structural engineering that wasn't supposed to have to be spent. So, yes, I want to build it. It will be built, but my ability to do so at this minute, it'd be disingenuous for me to say that's going up right now. The point of this project is, I'm taking a building that's been vacant since the year the Whalers left town.
I know, we understand that, I just-
Like, the Whalers left in ninety-seven.
Chris, I'm trying to help you out.
Yeah, no, and I don't, I get it.
I meant to kind of think, let's get you going. It's a tough building, and over the years, come back and add this stuff. It wouldn't bother me.
You have to put it on the site plan, so that way I don't have to come back to you guys again over site plan approval. That's why.
George?
Well, Dave solved the parking garage. The other issue I had, and now you tend to want to open at seven in the morning?
I want to allow my chef to offer breakfast, because breakfast is something that, in this town, has a bit lacking.
How do you think that'll go over with your next-door neighbors and stuff?
Well, we can hear from them.
Yeah, I mean, that's a conversation.
That we heard from, so.
All this is, is-
I don't know where it's at.
At this time, this is about, I can only set the timestamps that I want, right? And you guys, when I asked for my, my evening hours the last, when I first came by, y'all adjusted them, and I was totally fine with that, and I found it to be appropriate. When I proposed for the morning opening, it's partially because when you're gonna spend the time, I mean, I, I love breakfast. I don't, and I think that there's a real need for some more brunch here in town, and being directly across the street from the biggest church in the area, it seems like a great place to offer brunch.
I kind of agree with you.
Yeah.
So, to me, seven o'clock is reasonable. I don't know how the rest of the commission.
Well, he's looking for six, though. So.
No, you can just make a seven.
But he says it, but that's fine.
No, he can make a seven. I'm just saying, I had to put something in the application. I don't know what, yeah.
I think seven.
Peter?
That brings up another question, as I was reading through the materials here. I seem to recall, I don't know if it was a statement from you or from town staff, that in special occasions, like New Years or some other events, and maybe later, what did, was that you?
Yeah, it was, it's in the application or it was in the initial application.
Again, I'm, I'm kind of nervous about setting any vague statements.
Oh, no, no.
Just like the two years before, what did you mean by that?
The end of that sentence says, "with appropriate permits." Those are one-off events. In the town, I can throw a party, I can throw a block party tomorrow and get permits, well, not tomorrow, with appropriate permits, I can throw a block party by my house and be open till it's approved. So, the point being is for that statement is, for New Years, if there's something going on, for holidays on Main, which is, as everyone knows, a great event, and it does go fairly late, there might be a need and/or value to get a permit and be open later. I was not going to pretend that I was always gonna close at eleven or ten o'clock, whatever time I said, "on the dot," and everyone's gone. It's to say that under special circumstances, and that's why I listed special circumstances, New Years, holidays on Main, and I forgot what the other one was.
So, you're getting a separate permit?
I think you have to. It's a town function. With, with the town council, you have to get an approval for such special circumstances.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I would just pick up on what you said, Peter. I think we need to be clear, and I guess this is a special permit approval. As part of that, we set the hours, and I also have concerns if he's talking about getting some other type of permit from the building department or somebody else. I think we need to, we need to manage this and understand what we're approving, and I don't think we should leave it so open that, you know, it's out of our charge and he's got the leeway to pick whether it's, you know, three or eighteen times a year when he can stay open later at night. We just need to understand it.
Well, I think we probably wanna look back at the original approval, because that dealt with the later hours and-
Well, if you'd like, you can strike that. It's probably extra verbiage, and it probably only causes confusion to be direct. Right? Because the, what I'm referencing in regards to that is not something I'm coming up with. The town already has regulations based on events. It has noise requirements based on, it's noise requirements. I, maybe I should have omitted that sentence, but in my writing up a description of the project and describing the hours, I included that, because in my head, I was like, it probably would be open later on those nights. So, I don't need it to be implicit, like, I don't need it to be in black and white on there. You can strike that comment, but if you give me the regular hours, I will, I will potentially be applying on one or two nights a year to have something, or if somebody wants to have a birthday party in a private room or something, I don't know why I would say no if permitting was available.
Okay.
But again, it has to be, those have to be approved through this already existing infrastructure the town has developed for such things.
And are you talking about inside the building on those occasions or on the patio to be?
Oh, yeah, they would be. I mean, I think that, you guys laid down the law for the patio. I, I've considered that to be, you know, the law.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the conditions of the original approval?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I adjusted, if you see, I adjusted the hours to reflect your condition.
Does anybody else in the commission have any questions for him before we open it up to the public? Okay. All right. I will now invite members of the public who have any comments, questions, statements to come forward. Yes, in the far back, in the dark.
Janet Liburni, two hundred Broad Street, Weathersfield, no relation. Nobody got that, okay. Listening to the conversation tonight, back and forth, and I've been listening on and off during the whole time this has been going on, something comes to mind. I watch a lot of black and white movies, and I looked up one of the actors, who, of course, now I forget who it was, but he was talking about his dad. His dad's favorite expression was DIN. Sorry about my voice. Do it now. So, I've been listening to two years, three years, five years, and I'm like, forget it, do it now. Because you guys may not be here, people are gonna forget, things just don't get done. My recommendation would be that whatever you're gonna do with the handicap parking, do it now. Don't leave it to anybody else. Don't leave it to the town staff. Make it part of the entire package, because as you've seen already, it's kind of like snowballing. So, you know, I recognize that he's thinking about a garage, and he's got plans down the way, but I think that you ought to just solve the problem. This building, as everybody knows, and I'm just restating it, has been a problem for years. I've sat on HDC and watched many applications, and there's always been some type of problem. So, I think these guys are bending over backwards as a group, because we all wanna see something happen there and be successful. But I think that you need to figure out what you're doing with that parking, and I think the gentleman needs to be responsible and put it in the backyard, so there's no problems with anybody else. That's just my view. And I wish you good luck, and I hope your budget is not as tight as you have to worry about striping in three years as opposed to now, so, you know, it's what we're talking about, striping in three years. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just put Peter, like Janet?
Okay. I mean, hi Janet.
Scott Wands live at Four Avalon Place, so less than a mile from the proposal for us today. I've lived in town since 2010. My daughter Drants is at Griffith Academy. Walk through Old Main Street. This is a great proposal. It's better than the last proposal that was coming. It will add to the downtown area. I think that if we're fighting over two parking spaces versus having a viable plan for turning that into something that will comply with the master plan, add to the downtown, we have problems going on here. We have problems with parking in the downtown overall, and I don't think it's fair to be putting this on one business owner who's trying to renovate a building. I know we're trying to make accommodations here, but it seems like we're at an impasse, and if it means we have to take three parking spaces to make it to two handicap spaces, and I have to park a little bit further away to get my daughter from Griffith, I'm okay with that. I don't have a problem with walking a little further for myself when none of the other businesses are being made to make decisions to fix the lack of parking in the downtown area here. So, that's my own feelings here. We need to fix the downtown overall. We need to get this business in now, be on the rules, making some money, and I'm willing to walk a little further rather than have a fight over carving out three spaces differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have to still address you.
All right. Anybody else? Let's see, what did we get? Two pieces of staff correspondence. We got a number of emails in the last few hours. They follow a theme, which is handicap parking should be located near the front door, saving the two trees in front should be a priority over parking spaces, preserve the bus stop, and the applicant has already provided forty-eight spaces when forty-seven are required. Adding a brewery would be a great thing. And that's essentially the substance of emails from Jessica Sitler, Kathleen Flaherty, Alyssa Colaruso, Roland Grenier, Donna Diana, Anya Skiin, Kimberly Parata, Kim Jonas, Sarah Gantley, Erin McDonough, James Sladnowski, Craig Condon, Sean Abbott, Holly DuPont, Bruce David Smith, Kirsten Kelly, Marcy Jarzabek, Carol Moore, Carolyn Owens, Michael Ascandi, Marissa Pelleran, Brittany Walsh, Tim Castaldo, Ann Seitek, Carol Haslett, Victoria Martins, Mike Jones, Julie Freel, Kate Craig, Dan Harrison, Bianca Lane, Pam Harrison, Rob Rowland, Jenna Heft, Alana Sidwell, Ashley Friend, Colleen Matital, Janet Poriello, Mary Connolly, Sarah Mahan, Sean Putnam, Phil Pappas, and Novella Laspi. I'll pass them. You can take a quick look through them just to confirm that that's what they say. Anybody else in the public wanting to comment at this point? All right. There were two other staff memos that we got. One was from Derek to Denise at three nineteen, one was from Dominic to Denise at two thirty-six. Is there anything in here that's, that's new and relevant to our discussion?
Essentially, both of these emails are demonstrating staff's opinion that the proposed plan does not comply with the parking regulations.
So, I guess, you know, it sounds like we're, we're back to where we were at the beginning here, with respect to the main street parking being the only real open issue, and, I don't know, if Micah wants to come back up, we can finish the conversation here. Yeah, it all, it all comes down to his request that he gets to restripe the three existing spots and have those count as the handicap spots, which was not acceptable to the town traffic authorities, so even if we approve it, it's not gonna happen. Is that correct? Yeah. Or that we approve it with the additional parking spaces along Church Street and Main Street as, as shown, that will be satisfactory to town staff, and, and that the applicant doesn't want. But if, I don't know. How else do you see it?
I, except I didn't see that, those memos, and at no time, from the very beginning of this proposal, was it ever said that what I want to do on Main Street is not acceptable. All the comments said they want more than what I'm asking, in the sense, the three spaces plus some more parking. And so, I've offered to add additional parking, but is, is, and this is, maybe it's a question for Derek, and I don't know if we ever got a truly precise answer, or certainly, I don't feel like I did, but is there anything unsafe or out of, I don't know what the word is, out of code, maybe is the right word? If those three spaces were painted to be two handicap spaces? Outside of the traffic count, outside of everything, if those three were, had been painted blue by the town, much like the ones in front of Lucky Lou's, would there be any issue with those being handicapped? Is it a safety issue? Is it a design issue? Is it anything? Because if it's not, then I don't see, and this is maybe my naivete, but it means that those, putting handicap spaces there is not the problem. The problem, as seen by staff, is a reduction in total parking or something to that effect. And I've said in emails multiple times, and I've, I've not received a succinct answer, I don't believe, and I could be incorrect, that states that that's the problem. I'm happy to provide the three additional spaces, and I'm also happy to, in my application, to request, under the reduced parking in a village business district, ask for- to request, under the reduced parking in a village business district, ask for one more space, because it's, the folks in this room will get to make that decision. And prior to this, I've never asked for a single space. I went out and provided 33 spaces from Harseed, I used an existing deeded variance, I did not ask for it, it existed, and I offered to build spaces on the property. So understanding now that the spaces I was going to build on the property don't precisely work for the town, I'm offering to build those three additional spaces if that's the answer. But as far as the handicap space and location, I still see no reason why I disturb any of that, unless it's unsafe. If it's safe to paint those spaces handicap, what's wrong with it? That's what, I've never heard that there's anything wrong with that, it's the total number of spaces.
Again, and I'm not speaking for myself, I'm just speaking for what my impression is from the many months of talking about the same thing, is that the local traffic authority as a policy matter has decided that they do not want to restripe those parking spaces to provide the two handicap spaces needed for this application. I mean, that, I don't know.
Yeah, well, they do them two years from now. I mean, I'm just, I'm...
No, 'cause that's why we're still here.
I'm just, this is a guy, a building that's been vacant for 25 years. He's trying to start a business, and someone says, oh, 10, 15 grand, that's not a lot of money to do that. That's a lot of money to try to start a business, and it's not even viable yet. So let's get the traffic authority to say, we're gonna kill this project for two years, and say public in a newspaper, because we can't delay and give them a break on two spots. This is craziness. You should give them a break, in two years, come back and put this, if you're, hopefully you're viable, you could be out of business in a year and a half, I don't know. But to me, that's craziness.
But I will have already built three more spaces on the other side of the street, so the town's still up.
This building's been empty 25 years. You just set the big stack around with every single person on the stack said they liked this project. I don't know, parking's a problem, but one space isn't gonna make it. I just...
And as an interesting...
No, no, let's go back to the traffic authority and say, can we give them two years, and let whoever this traffic authority is, the town manager, and say publicly, we're gonna stop this project for one space. This is crazy.
Well, that's what we did in November, and that's why we're here in now.
Still here, he's not building anything yet.
I guess to follow up on what you said, Mr. Chairman, it seems like we've got a couple of choices. One is, we don't act tonight, and the applicant tries to go back and get the okay from our traffic authority that they'd be agreeable to defer the new spaces on Main Street, and if he comes back in two weeks with that agreement, then we can vote on it. Or alternatively, we vote on it tonight, and if we don't require him to do those spaces, then our approval may not be of value to him, right?
I'm sorry, keep me on the agenda.
And, no, I think that's accurate, and what I want to avoid is, once again, approving something that is of no value to him, because, you know, that's of no value to anyone.
Right. I mean, I guess the other thing is if we included it as a condition that he's gotta do it now, and he can go get something from the traffic authority, he could come back here and ask us to amend the condition based on that, right?
Well, to do what now?
If we require the Main Street ones tonight, but he, in a week, gets the traffic authority to say, I'm okay with giving him two years to build them, he could come back with that in hand, and we could amend the condition, I suppose.
Right.
I'm with Dave on this one. It seems to me that we can stipulate a timeframe, you know, two years, one year, whatever, and I don't see why that's a problem. I mean, the town manager will look at that and say, okay, or not.
Hopefully, two years is rolling the money. The 10, 15 grand doesn't mean anything to him. I can see it being a problem right now, but I don't know.
I understood him to say that he's backing off from not doing anything in the front, he's willing to do what the town engineer has suggested, just not now. He wants some time, and I'm okay with that. So if there's any way we can give him some time.
Specifically, in order, my understanding, and this is, I'm only expressing what was communicated to me by the planning department, the building department mainly, Derek may have some comments, is that in order for me to get a certificate of occupancy, no matter what, you will need to allow me to paint those three spaces as handicapped. If you put a time, a stay on it, fine, but I have to be able to paint it now as a temporary solution. If the new town manager, and I think partially we're all victim to the fact that the new town manager started literally one week ago, so for him to jump in on this specific item is understandably not, like, it's, he had a meeting, that's all we can ask, right? We can't, so in the next, within the next week, I think it's quite reasonable that we can all get together. Another two weeks isn't gonna be the death of me, it's already been, I'll just be quiet. It's been a long time, and it's another two weeks, and getting it right is worth it for me, frankly. I don't wanna have to put everyone through this again, though.
So you're willing to continue for two weeks?
Oh, boy, please, no, but yes.
Well, I mean, frankly, I think that's a lot more preferable than approving something that accomplishes nothing.
Well, it could bounce, or maybe, not bounce, understand.
Yeah, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I think we've spent $10,000 or $15,000 worth of staff time.
If town staff, if the town manager and the town engineer and myself and my engineers, whatever, come to agreement in, on our own, and send a letter, we may not, you tell me, but there probably is a way for you to approve it based on that letter. I don't know the law on that, but I don't think we need to go through the dog and pony show for a fifth time. The dog and pony show's important, but everyone's had a chance to speak.
I don't think we need to know anything more than, you have time, and here's what the time is.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, the downside is that if in those two weeks the answer is the same as it has been with the prior town manager, you know, then...
I have a hard time believing it'll be more challenging than in the past.
Come up with 10 to 15 grand, make a decision.
I will. That's what I'll do. To a GoFundMe or something, I don't know. I mean, realistically, yeah, I could, yes, I could say, let's do it, and then I'll do all the renovations I need to, to get, and when I run out of money, I'll let you know when I'm out of money. I don't know, I mean, but I should be okay, it's just, I have to try to protect my spend now, because unfortunately, every meeting with town staff cost me $50,000, you know? We need this type of this, and I understand, it's the process, but this building has already been treated as if it's new construction, therefore I have to bring every inch of this to code as if it's a brand-new building. There's been no consideration of it being a previously-built building of assembly use. And so that has already created a bit of a hardship on my front. I'm not crying about it, I'm still trying to get the right proposal in. So, you know, you guys do what you need to on parking, I'll have to live with it, won't I? I mean, that's, is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, we have nothing but respect for what you're doing with this building, and we're not trying to make things difficult, it's just, you know, again, and for the last time, this is, the ultimate decision on striping those spaces is not ours to make, so we just don't wanna give you something that accomplishes nothing. Chairman, you wanna?
I have to, I have to make answers to at least the one comment that was given before. Unfortunately, she did just step out, but I wanted to, although a lot of folks have come before this town over the last 25 years and proposed all manner of things, I can factually guarantee I'm the only one who's spent money in their building. All right. It's a shell, and it's rotten. So if anybody wants to know my, whether I'm earnest, whether this is real, I'll show you around. I'll show you the already-approved and stamped building that we done. We have, I've brought it back to assembly use with a structural engineer, it's all been approved by the town. That building is now rated again for 300 people per floor as assembly use, it's not, as brewpub use. But, so, I'm spending the money, I'm not going away. I live in town, I've lived in town for 12 years. This is not some outside company trying to put in a million dollars' worth of condos, I'm not doing that. I live here, so, just, I need that to be on the record. This isn't some fly-by-night kind of shady operation, coming into town and leaving, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we continue this hearing for two weeks, pending hearing from the new town manager on if it's acceptable for this applicant to hold off a period of time before installing new parking spaces in the front on Main Street?
Is it still public hearing, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still, yeah, it will still be a public hearing.
Okay, good. I'd say, just my last ask is, if you guys, if you are open to it, put together draft conditions and send them to the town manager and staff so that we can confer that those are achievable conditions.
Understood.
And I think that might make it easier, I don't know if you're up for that, but I think it might make the communication easier on the after-meeting process.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there are a lot of things that are in here that require elaborate conditions or stipulations. I think, you know, I've heard a number of people say that they're comfortable with 7:00 AM as opposed to 6:00 AM, the three spaces on Church Street with whatever, you know, tweaks can be accommodated, and just the open question of, will you, will the local traffic authority allow those existing three spaces to be remarked as two handicap spaces, or will the local traffic authority require additional parking spaces to be constructed, including a handicap space? And if so, do you have up to two years to do that? I mean, that, that seems to me to be what the issue is. I don't know.
And that decision for the traffic authority is outside of us.
Yes, yeah.
And there's nothing that we're taping or moving tonight that we're doing that's holding him up.
No.
It would be a traffic authority discussion, that's the only open item, other than the hours and the Church Street spots.
The back, the rear stairs, you are also specifically approving my exit on the west of the building, the coming out of the kitchen?
Yeah.
As well, which is on the site plan, you can see that, and there's an elevation that was included in the proposal as well for that.
So we're not impeding, nothing we're doing here is impeding him from moving forward, it's just other traffic.
No, we just, we just want whatever approval we give to be something that he can move forward with.
They won't let me file a Mylar, though, if they are unwilling to sign off on it, and that's why I'm here now. The Mylar being the final plan, so, that's what we're doing, is making sure that what, that the town staff are willing to sign off on the Mylar, so it's not, it wasn't planning last time.
Yeah, I understand what we mentioned earlier, time kills deals, right? And if you've got...
I've got no back out on this one. I'm all in.
Well, wait, first, Peter made the motion, George seconded it, and Tom?
I guess, a question, or from my understanding, there's really two issues pertaining to time, time extension here. One is that the parking aspect of the site plan is really under the control of, you know, an entity beyond this commission, and therefore, we would postpone any decision we make until we have a definitive decision from the parking authority, who has that power legally to make that kind of determination, which...
Yeah.
Okay. The second issue, though, that has been mentioned, that relates to his request for additional time in order to comply with whatever happens, is the requirements for getting certificate of occupancy. And in the event, he has to have his parking constructed, if that is the ultimate way that the parking authority rules, that he would have to install the parking as per the plan that staff would put together. He would have to have that done at the time that he would get the CO, or can he postpone that aspect of the construction and get a temporary CO prior to his completion of the, any parking requirements?
I have an answer for that.
That question, I don't know.
That came up after the first time. That is one that legally, there's a path to allow me to move forward despite that handicap parking and eventually sort that out, but the interim town manager was unwilling to allow that as the acting parking czar, so it really, again, comes down to the new, current, permanent town manager to make that ultimate call, because that person basically can say, until I sign off, you are not allowed to use that as handicap parking, and therefore you are unallowed to get a CO. I can apply for a waiver from the State Building Department, and I, okay, so those rules in Connecticut are pretty broad, because we have so many historic buildings. My understanding is, I can apply for almost anything, it just doesn't mean I'm gonna get it. And my understanding is also that they check with folks like Derek and with Steve, head of plant, head of building, to make sure it's an appropriate waiver to allow me to open with a temporary CO. But I need to, so I need to get that approved. Specifically, and maybe, Derek, I'm remembering this wrong, but I think Bonnie wanted me to get that approved before she would allow me to fill that out. When I contacted the State Build Department folks, they would not allow me to apply unless I had the, so I was in the catch-22, and again, I'm here. So, it all comes back to this, there are slight require, you know, the different departments, kind of parts of the government need to kind of work together on this, or I need to just build a strip mall, you know? But I, you know, as long as we can work that out offline, I'm totally agreeable to that, it's a lot better than not, than not getting it right, in my opinion, so...
Okay. Anything else? Right, motion's been made and seconded to continue the hearing to...
June 7.
June 7, 7 o'clock, here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. And get, Denise.
All right. Next item, 3.2, public hearing, 210522Z, Carl Morata seeking a re-subdivision in accordance with 14320 of the Weathersfield subdivision regulations for the creation of three new building lots at 117 Maple Street. And Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're really doing is not a re-subdivision, he's asking for a modification of the approved re-subdivision application to remove the requirement that the exist, that the existing building be taken off septic and connected to the MDC?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's, that's basically all that we are here for.
That's the only modification that Mr. Morata is seeking.
Okay. So the applicant, come on up, please, just...
I hope he explains why he wants to do that.
Well, I think that's why he's here. Could you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and the commission, my name's Carl Morata, I live at 192 Clearfield. I've lived in Weathersfield for 60 years. I've come here to ask for your help and consideration. The septic system at 117 Maple Street, I believe, is not a real necessity. Since I started, everything has risen over 300%, and it's been very hard to continue with the project. And there are also eight other homes right in that area that are on septic, so I believe it's not really a real necessity to make that connection. And there is nothing wrong with the septic system, I've talked to the Health Department, and they have no issue with it.
Why was it approved in the first place, Mr. Morata? Go to MDC.
Why was it?
Yeah, why did, why did the property owner pry it to this? Come to us and our, or the MDC and want that?
George, he was the original...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he doesn't know the history of it.
No, I don't know the history. No, no.
And there are defects at all? None at all?
What's that?
With the existing septic?
No, nothing at all. And it's, like I said, there's eight, I know of eight right in that area that have it still.
Oh, really? Okay.
And that's what I feel is not really a real necessity, and I did sell the property, you know, as-is, to the homeowner, so it was my obligation to hook it up, but it's just become very, very expensive to do anything, I don't have to tell you. I'm over 300%, and I'm trying to keep the business going. Over 300%, and I'm trying to keep the business going. So I'm, come here with your consideration to try to help me.
So you've sold the property as-is with a septic system?
Yes.
The buyer who's going to be the one having to?
They would be the responsibility, yes.
Do they know that?
I, the next real estate sold it, I didn't personally tell them.
Okay.
So that the bad guy who owns the property right now, he had no understanding he was going to get a sewer connection?
I don't know, I didn't really talk to him on it, because it never was, was told to me that the real estate had sold it to them, and it was as-is.
Oh, you didn't sell him the property, somebody else?
No, the real estate did.
Oh, I sure don't have real clear on that, so, so, what's the real estate? Who sold, who sold him the property?
Um, I'm trying, the name was out.
So why does that have anything to do, oh, because your subdivision, you're part of the deal, was you had to get?
Yeah, it was part of the house, and the house was sold as-is.
Okay, so.
And.
So you had nothing to do with selling that house?
No, I didn't sell it, no, no.
Okay, so it's kind of.
But I'm just saying, there's nothing wrong with it, because I went to the Health Department, so.
But the new, the owner has no understanding and his deal that he was supposed to sue?
I don't believe so, no. And there's also, there's the well there has to be closed up, which is not, shut down, there's nothing, it's not being used, it's just in the front yard, so that's.
The original house on the corner, right?
Yes, it's the 117 Maple.
Are all the houses in that area pretty well connected up to the sewer?
No, just, like I said, there's eight right there.
Eight around, around?
Right, I know of, there's probably more.
In the Harley project and stuff?
Yeah, there's probably more, but I just, I don't personally.
You know that, man.
Yes. So that's why I believe it's not a real necessity, there's nothing wrong with it.
And I think props in this town, our soil systems do accommodate.
They're very good over there, it's perfect over there, and you know.
Even though there aren't that many?
No, and the gentleman that does this, Sylvester's out of, I believe, the East Hartford, and they've, they've checked it, and it's in good shape, so. 6100 years, they say, it's, they're, they're good for.
So just, I'm trying to understand, the original subdivision approval required you?
Yes, it did.
And this was an existing house?
The house was there, and it has, has a septic system.
Pete, it's the Harris house on the corner, Maple's been there.
Yeah, Maple, 117 Maple.
That's the White House in the corner?
It's probably one of the oldest homes in, in Weathersfield.
Oh, yeah.
Almost 270 years old.
Mr. Marata is one of the better builders in the area, I happen to know him because he's my neighbor, but I don't know him otherwise.
Is, could somehow, is there a rule?
We try, we try.
The septic system, can you repair a septic system in Weathersfield? Or no?
Excuse me?
Can you repair one? I thought you couldn't, I was just.
No, I don't think you can, because you'd need like a secondary and.
Yeah, I always thought that if you, if it failed, you had to connect, but if you could live on it forever and everything, you don't have to, okay.
And the sewer content's excellent there, so.
So if we approve this, next meeting, we're gonna have the new owner come down and ask us what we did, or how's that work, or?
I own, I.
I don't know?
No.
You're not gonna say you're not doing this, or he doesn't really care? I'm just.
I don't know, I don't know, because I, I just left it to the real estate, and we sold it, like I said, as-is.
But was it, was it clear that there was a septic system?
Yes, yes, yes.
Did the new buyer know?
They knew there was a septic system there. And I mean, I don't know what's really wrong with it, we've got a lot of those in Lassimerie, they're all over the place, septic systems. So. Any other questions?
How frequently is the septic tank pumped out?
Five years.
Every five years?
Yeah, five years, yeah.
How many people are living in the house?
I'm guessing six.
For myself, if, he has no obligation other than to the subdivision agreement.
Right.
I guess the owner doesn't care, because he's, either he doesn't know or doesn't care, I'm not sure what, but.
No, I care, but I don't feel.
Well, I feel more concerned about the doesn't know.
That's right, I just kind of like, the whole thing about not knowing is kind of bothersome to me, but.
I just feel, I just feel there's nothing really wrong with it.
No, no, I understand, though, but if, if I owned this house, I had some understanding when I bought it, that there was going to be a sewer connection, that's a pretty big deal versus all of a sudden waking up one day and saying, I don't have one.
I mean, I mean, if they, if they want to do it, I mean, there's also an assessment due, that it has to be paid, you know, in the road.
Would that be paid by you, though?
No, them, they have to pay that too.
No, no, but isn't your deal to put that in, so you were gonna have to pay that, right?
I would put this, if I had to, I would have to put the, hook it up, but they'd have to pay the tax on it, the assessment.
So, I bought a house in Old Weathersfield years ago, that had a septic system, and it failed on me.
Uh huh.
It was my expense to obviously connect. But I was very knowledgeable of the fact that I had a house with a system that could fail, so I, I knew what I was buying into, so when it failed, that's fine, it's, it's what I bought into, and that's what I did. I would feel better if, if it was clear that this individual understands what he's buying into, and if he does, then I'm fine with what you're requesting. But as Dave said, it would be really unfair to this individual if he's, if he's thinking that he has a connection because of your prior commitment, and then we pull it from him, you know? That wouldn't be.
No, I didn't, I was, like I said, the contract read as-is, I mean, I didn't not say this, I'm gonna cook through your sewer, you know, I mean, just septic system there.
As-is could mean as-is with the condition of attaching the, you know.
Right.
What, what does as-is mean? I mean, is my question. If he understands clearly that if that fails.
Well, the home's older, very old, and you're buying an old house, I mean, we didn't do any major repairs in it, just to clean it, clean it up and sell it.
There, there are two pieces of correspondence on the record, one from Tom Harris, who, whose parents owned the property at 131, and I guess they also may have owned 117 at the time.
Yes, they did.
And he indicates that the septic system is made of cinder blocks when the old one collapsed, and that he had warned the newest owner that their parking car is on top of a steel plate which covers the existing system, that, that sounds kind of shaky, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't, I don't know anything about it.
Do you know anything about an email that your attorney sent to Dominic Caruso indicating that as a condition of getting the final CO for 123 Maple Street, you agreed to connect 117 to the sewer?
Right, at that time, things, since then, things have gotten really bad to, for me to continue. And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, and that was.
If there's nothing wrong with it.
Two months ago.
Yeah. These just keep escalating every day.
So it's going to escalate and be somebody else's problem, that's what you want us to approve?
I can't hear you very well.
So you, you want us to make it somebody else's problem?
No, it's not really a problem, there's just nothing really wrong with the system.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions before we open it up to the public? All right, this is a public hearing, does anybody want to comment on this application at all? Sir?
117.
Okay, come on up, and just please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Bob Miltonberger, I am the new owner of the house on 117 Maple Street. I, I wasn't aware that, I guess the septic is, as you just described, cinder blocks or whatever, so I wasn't aware of that, so I don't know if it's going to go bad on me in a month, two days, a year, so I didn't know it was going to be hooked up potentially to the town sewer. So I'm just, I've become aware of it now, basically.
Okay.
Was your understanding that it would be hooked up by someone else, or did you believe that if it failed in the future, it would be your responsibility? When you bought this as-is, what, what was your understanding of as-is?
Well, all I knew is that it was a septic system, not, I, I thought maybe it was hooked up to the town until my realtor, realtor said that it was a septic tank, and that's it. That's, that's the only information I have.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what do you want? Do you want it on the septic or sewer? Because if you go to sewer, like you said, you will pay some fees, you know, continues to the MDC.
Correct.
So what do you want? I'm, I'm just.
I'm just worried about the, the condition of the septic tank, I don't know.
No, but that's your problem, no matter what, it's, so.
Right, but if it was known that it was just cinder blocks?
Well, we don't know that, though, that's just someone worried about that.
Did you do an inspection when you bought the house?
I had an inspector, I'm not sure if that was part of inspection, but I have to look at it.
Okay.
I'm not, not aware.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's as-is, you would want to have the inspection done just so you wouldn't be buying a.
Correct.
Termite-laden cesspool or something, right?
Right, right.
So, for me, I kind of, maybe you need to educate what you have and what you want, because if you had an expectation to be on the city sewer, I kind of go your direction if you don't want to be, and the septic tank's fine, because it is, it will be cheaper for you if it doesn't, I have friends in town, a septic system is cheaper. You know, so tell us what you want, we can decide, you know, if you're happy with what you have and helping out, that's fine, too, I, I don't have a problem with either one, you know, I'm just not sure what your expectations are, it's kind of an oddball thing.
It is, like I said, I just learned about it recently, so I'm not, I haven't even thought about it, 100%.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And anybody else have any, anybody else want to speak on this application? Either, either of the people that aren't paying attention? Do you want to comment or not? Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Do you have any final comments?
Fine.
Do you have any feedback from either town staff or the Health Department?
Just in addition to, you know, the comments and the memo from Attorney Shaw, because of the previous approval where we felt that the system would be abandoned and the sanitary sewer hooked up, the planning and, and engineering department had signed off on the building permit with the understanding that this would be done. And we did get a memo basically from the Health Department saying that if the hookup to the sewer was the original agreement, and the only reason not to do so was to save money for the builder, that they would be inclined to make him connect to the sewer. Based on the location of the system, the surrounding developed areas, and the proximity to Route 3, we would, staff strongly recommends that the requirement to abandon the system and connect the house remain.
Does the connection have to be done to Route 3?
Um.
That's probably where it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where it was.
I think it was going to be on Lancaster.
Yeah, I would hope so, yeah.
That's my only comment.
Okay. It doesn't say in here?
Where would you connect to? Lancaster? The sewer, where's the sewer connection for that?
Where's the sewer connection?
Yeah, it's on Lancaster, on Maple.
Lancaster.
It's on Lancaster.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, it looks like where we've got.
Who asked that this be connected up to the MDC system in the past?
It was per.
Who, who started it originally to connect up to the MDC?
Originally, who started?
Yeah, when, when the subdivision was made there, about five or 10 years ago?
Right, right.
It was the recommendation of the Health Department, and it was incorporated into this proposed plan.
Had the Health Department had complaints in that area or anything? Because that, he indicates.
Not to my knowledge.
No. And I, and I believe the tank's not cinder block, it's concrete, because Sylvester had changed it, I think in 1980 or 79. So it's not a cinder block found, uh, structure.
Okay. All right, anything else for the applicant, or do you want to close the hearing?
Motion close, I guess.
All right, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, someone want to make a motion on the request to modify this re-subdivision approval? Bear in mind that there are seven of us, but it requires five to carry a motion.
Motion so made by me, Mr. Chairman.
To modify the re-subdivision approval to delete that requirement?
Right.
Okay. All right, is there a second? Well, I'll second it just so that we can go home. All right, any discussion?
I, I really believe that septic systems are not the way to go. I had tremendous problems with the one that I bought, I realized it, and eventually I had to incur, you know, substantial costs to, to connect it. And as I said before, I was fully aware of that. To leave a septic system in place is not a good idea, in my opinion. If we have a condition that would clean up that mess, we ought to, we ought to just take it.
My, I, I think I'd rather, I'd like to have the homeowner decide. Connecting, I think connecting's fine, but I, the homeowner's gonna have some additional costs once it's, once it's connected. What does he want? I don't know. I mean, did you want to put, if it fails, he's got a $15,000 bill, there's no question if it fails. But if he gets it fixed, he's gonna, I don't know, what's the cost you'll quarter to MDC extra? I mean, it's not much, but it's something.
It's, it's trivial.
It's, no.
Considering the problems I have.
Everything's true, you know, everybody's got their own costs, I, I don't know. My first connection would be connected to the sewer, I, you know, it's there, that was the agreement, so, but.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my sense is that, you know, even if the buyer did not have actual awareness or information that this was a requirement for the place that he purchased, that he did have, you know, constructive notice in that this is part of the records, you know, land records for this property. The second thing is, as a matter of public policy, we tend to favor having residential facilities be on a public sewer as opposed to the, the vagaries of, of a, you know, a local septic system, which is, you know, should be only utilized when there's no other alternative. And I feel great sympathy to this developer who is kind of underwater as a consequence of the project, but that was a business risk that he assumed in tackling this project, and, you know, he's a businessman who, who took a risk, and in this case, you know, the risk has come back to haunt him in all probability. But I don't think, as a matter of public policy, we should allow these things to, to go by the wayside simply because the developer has financial problems.
Okay, anybody else? All right, the motion on the floor is to waive the requirement that they hook up to the system, except the sewer system. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
All right. Those have it, motion fails. Other business, nothing, minutes, April 19th. Someone want to make a motion?
Do you want me to go through a couple of small minor things in here?
Nah.
Well, you might as well.
Do I have to?
It's not 10:30 yet.
Page, page five here?
Yep.
Something, it says seconded by Commissioner Roy Cohn, it's not. Uh, something, it says seconded by Commissioner Roy Garz, not my name involved here, but where is the, where is the motion? I mean, it's kind of weird up here. Who made the first motion?
The motion is on page three.
Yeah.
Commissioner Haneki made the motion.
Where is that, over on page three?
Yeah, it's like.
Second paragraph from the bottom.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's kind of hard to follow that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably.
On page.
Yeah, you should probably move that back up to, to there, okay.
There was one other.
With the motion, all right.
I'm, I'm not sure. Be patient.
Can I make a motion to approve, you know, even though I wasn't there?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve of April nineteenth meeting notes.
I'll second.
All right, did you have something else?
I have a heck with it, a couple of little things back here.
Oh, you can send them in, I'm sure you're right. All right, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. Okay, all right, so we got five in favor, two abstentions. Staff reports.
Um, the only thing that I have to report is we do have a pending application which town staff filed at the end of last week to extend, I'm sorry, to extend the moratorium that's in place regarding cannabis establishments.
You have what?
Uh, an application to extend the moratorium.
From where?
I think that, that would be up for discussion, we, it could be for a period up to six months.
Yeah.
It counts more.
From the town or from a person or?
No, it's our, it's our.
It's the town application.
Oh, okay. We're doing what we should do.
It'll give us time to take the town council's recommendation to start to craft regulations that could potentially enable, um, certain types of establishments.
That sounds more positive to me, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, and as I think I remember, their recommendation was that they were okay with growing, but not.
Not dispensaries.
Dispensing, yeah.
Yes.
And I, and I think one other thing that's kind of noteworthy that's happened since we put in the moratorium was that the, the cap on the number of establishments has been taken out of the statute, so, you know, we were kind of operating under the presumption that we would only get one retail dispensary and one micro cultivator, you know. The reality is you only get whatever the state licenses, but those caps based on population have been deleted from the statute by the legislature a couple of weeks ago.
So just as while we had a moratorium out.
So let me just, I'm trying to understand, so you're allowed an unlimited number of retail sales establishments and an unlimited number of growing establishments under the state statute?
Yeah, theoretically, subject to the state issuing the licenses, you know, which.
It's not like liquor stores where there's like a population against certain.
Right, exactly, that has been deleted.
So, and then what we're doing is the town is gonna figure out rules around what we're actually going to allow.
Right, the moratorium that's in place is basically saying no applications for these uses at all for a period of time while we draft regulations. And, you know, the initial goal was to get feedback from the town council, the town manager, police, the schools, health department and so forth.
I think I saw the.
Yeah, I mean, and that, that was a while ago.
I thought the town council rejected this whole thing, didn't they, or not?
So we want the moratorium to continue.
The town council rejected regulations that would allow for dispensaries, but they were supportive of any other type of establishment.
I understand, okay.
No, we got, we got the information from council, we just need to act on that and the moratorium expires soon.
Oh, so. Just last question, dispensary versus retail, when I think dispensary, I think of like a medical dispensary type thing versus a retail establishment, I think you can just sell it, is there a difference, or does dispensary cover any big word?
Um, I, I think dispensary is technically the medical one and you can have a hybrid dispensary that includes medical and recreational, and then you have recreational retail facility or something is the kind of the third category.
Okay.
Yeah, that, there, there are no limits on the medical ones, but there are not a whole lot of those licenses being issued now.
So if we continue the moratorium, which we should, but then, then what? What are the next steps, Denise?
Uh, staff will present some options in terms of, um, language to adopt.
To who?
To you.
Yeah, to us for draft regulations.
Does the council ever participate with us in any of this stuff?
They, we just, they.
Let them talk, I want to hear what you've got to say.
We were opposed to recreational retail sales, not medical, I think medical's already allowed.
That's right.
Yeah, by special funds.
That makes sense to me.
So it was recreational use of distribution, not growing, we allow growing in, I don't know the other categories of terminology. We're focusing on prohibiting retail sales or recreational pens.
Are you guys gonna let us sit up here by ourselves and make these decisions? Are you gonna advise us or meet with us or do something like that? What's the manager gonna do?
I don't think that was our purview, but.
I didn't think so, you know.
Well, no, I mean, we, we sent it to them like in December and they came back in January or February with what he just said.
No recreational sales.
Yeah, the retail sales.
Right, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
We could have just made an ordinance and prohibited everything, period, right?
Yeah.
Chose to structure the, whatever you come up with. It's our recommendation, I guess, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, and we can do what we want.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. But I looked at their guidance on.
So would we be then trying to figure out what regulations we want for growing? Would that be pretty much our, our task?
Growing, production, warehousing.
Okay.
You know, there's a few different definitions.
Think we can grow on Willow Street, make town make a little money.
Grow between the graves.
That's right.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
So do we need to make a motion to extend?
No, no.
No, this is, I was just reporting that it's gonna be on your upcoming meeting.
Oh, okay. That is an application that will be presented, because the moratorium is technically an amendment to the zoning regulation, so we have to go through that process.
Okay.
All right, public comment? Correspondence, nothing, applications, we've discussed, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.